Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February Public Meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin, the board would like to acknowledge and thank the first peoples of the Hong Kong Meanum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. This evening, we have a couple of announcements to get our meeting started. Trustee Larson?
Thank you. Pink Shirt Day is February 23rd, 2022. Pink Shirt Day began in 2007 when a student in Nova Scotia was bullied for wearing a pink shirt to school. It has since been recognized annually worldwide as a day to stand against bullying and to lift each other up and have greater acceptance, respect, and inclusion for all. The Board's Strategic Plan Priority Two, Equity and Inclusion, outlines our commitment to ensure that all of our students, families, and staff feel welcomed, are treated respectfully, and have a sense of belonging. This Pink Shirt Day, let's do what we can to elevate the voices of all. Take a stand against bullying and be advocates for kindness and inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Larson, and I would encourage everyone to go and follow and see what our schools have been posting today on on social media. They've all been very active in participating in Pink Shirt Day. And we have one more announcement, Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. Briefs regarding the 2022-2023 annual budget will be accepted without prior notice at the March 20th, 2022, and April 27th, 2022, regular meetings of the board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the district's 2223 website. All budget feedback will be considered by the board as part of the budget process, which is anticipated to be completed by May 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Sergeant, and as has become part of our practice in the Zoom meeting era, I'm going to turn things over to our Secretary of Treasure, Ms. Wang, for a few reminders about how our meeting will operate tonight.
Thank you, Chairperson. So this is just a reminder for the public joining us this evening. We'll be having two question periods, at which time we'll be reading the questions that we received in the board meeting email account. If you haven't submitted your questions, please feel free to do so to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca. And also for the public joining us this evening, you'll be able to watch and listen to the meeting, but you will not be able to speak or chat during the meeting. So please send your questions to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca or through the Q and A feature in Zoom. We will be having a recording of this meeting and will be making it available for viewing after the meeting. So that's my announcement. Back to you, Chairperson.
Thank you, and I'll add just a brief announcement that about 45 minutes in, we will be taking a very brief, very brief break, so trustees can can have a little bit of a break in the middle of the meeting. And we can all have a little bit of a break and ensure that we're not in front of our screens for too long at any one time. Are there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Chairperson, all meeting materials are included in the meeting package and is available to the public on the district's website.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move to item two, adoption of our agenda. If there are no other additions to the agenda, can I get a mover for our agenda? Trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by Trustee Larson, all in favor? Any opposed? Start. Okay, that's carried. We'll move into our agenda then, and we do not have any presentations or special recognitions this evening. We do have a brief that has been submitted by Ms. Liz Baberstock, President of the Richmond Teachers Association. Welcome.
Good evening. Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association. And I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to present what I imagine will be our first budget brief from the Richmond Teachers Association for your consideration in the continuing budget planning and working groups. And as always, we do appreciate the transparency of this work and the opportunity to present our ideas and reflections on the evolving budget for the 2022-2023 school year. I won't be reading the brief, but I will be highlighting a few things. The the RTA does continue to see a range of needs across the district, but we have focused on a few areas in our brief. Some of the items have included costing, and in all cases, we have tried to highlight alignment with the Board's Strategic Plan. Tonight, I also want to take the opportunity to highlight the recent BC Government Announcement, which includes an increase across the board of 3.83% for education, with most of that reflecting the continued expectation of increased student enrollment. From our perspective, the recent budget announcement doesn't appear to be sufficient to address many of the items the RTA has highlighted in our budget brief. And there were a few areas that we'd hoped would see some additional funding, specifically some funding for continued improvement for ventilation and specific funding to support truth and reconciliation and also for training and support to the changes in reporting and assessment. So as I said, I'm not going to read through the brief, but we'll reference some of the headings in the document. Some areas that we have outlined is our continued appreciation, one for the innovation grants. We we do recognize the value of the innovation grants and do believe that these should be continued and expanded. Specifically, we feel that there should be some additional grants or additional funding to support specifically for truth and reconciliation and also community-engaged learners. And we really do feel that we could add some funding for this to help inspire learners through equity, inclusion, and diversity projects within schools and also within the community of learners. And we've always appreciated the support that is initiated through these grants to support the curiosity and passion of educators in Richmond. Second area that we continue to highlight is additional counseling support. We know that there is a mutual commitment to support mental health. But despite this, and mostly because there's still not enough budget from the provincial government to support this, you know, we really do still need more counselors in schools. The needs are growing as more Richmond students are more willing to seek and ask for support as there is a growing understanding of mental health. A third area we've highlighted is advocacy and support to implement the new reporting order. We anticipate that a new reporting order will be coming out in the spring or over the summer with another transition year or potential transition year, but we do think that the provincial government should be providing more support for this transition into the new reporting order and also in terms of assessment that is aligned with changes in curriculum. A fourth area is additional training for teachers that can be accessed during the year and in the summer. We used to have a very strong and robust summer support for training for teachers. And of course, over the past couple of years, this hasn't been possible because of the pandemic. So we would like to see some additional funding to allow this to happen over the summer. And we actually feel that this aligns nicely with many of the district initiatives to address equity and inclusion. A fifth area that we do feel that needs attention from our perspective is class size and ensuring that there is flexibility within the district to address mid-year enrollment increases. And we've seen that, which is good news for the district when we see increasing enrollment, but it has added additional pressures across Richmond, especially in city center. And ensuring that there is space and support being accessible is key to the work that teachers do when welcoming new students to Richmond. A sixth area, which is of note for tonight, is mechanical ventilation. And it is a particular note for tonight because I see that in your package tonight, you will be discussing a report from Executive Director Frank Geier in regards to ventilation. And the RTA is fully supportive of the board immediately working to address some of the ventilation inadequacies that have been highlighted in this report. The pandemic has drawn our attention to the importance of fresh air circulation, both in terms of health and safety and in terms of learning. So action tonight by the board will allow the district to begin this necessary work to optimize facilities and to ensure that they are safe, equitable, and conducive to learning. It also has another benefit of supporting sustainability in terms of climate change. Another area that we draw your attention to is ergonomic improvements. One thing again is, as a result of the pandemic, is the use of laptops and the use of technology and the impact it has on teachers in terms of ergonomics. So we do feel that there needs to be additional support to ensure that teachers have proper ergonomic setups in order to do work with laptops. One of the things that you'll see when people are on screen with laptops or they're typing is you'll actually often see people hunched over. Well, that takes its toll on on your body, and those kind of long hours are, we are seeing the impacts on teachers. An eighth area that we have highlighted is access for TTOCs to the Employee Family Assistance Plan. This is a small way that the board can help support TTOCs who do not have access to paid benefits. They could buy health benefits, but they don't get paid benefits as part of their work for the Richmond School District. And it is a key area that TTOCs, it is a range for them to have some access, but it would be nice if they didn't have to make special arrangements to have access to EFAP. They have been key to supporting learning enrichment, and they are always key to supporting learning enrichment when there are absences. And finally, we have always appreciated the vaccine program. It's been extremely successful in Richmond. I think you can be proud of the work that has been done in this area, and it is very well appreciated by teachers in Richmond. So with that, I express my appreciation and request that you continue your attention to this through the various working groups that will be involved with preparing the budget for 2022-2023. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Ms. Baberstock, for the highlighting the information in your brief for trustees tonight. Are there any questions from trustees? And we are anticipating some robust discussion at our Budget Advisory Working Group meetings as we move through that process, which is just getting underway. So I would like to propose that we refer the brief to that process, to the Budget Advisory Working Group. See a mover, Trustee Sergeant, thank you. Second or Trustee Larson, any further discussion? Those in favor? That looks unanimous, so that we'll refer that there, and we will look forward to future discussion and possibly future briefs from RTA. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is question time, where we can take some questions from those attending tonight. Just a reminder, we do have two question periods, and if you have a question about something that's coming up, you might want to hold off, see if your question is answered as we move through the information part of our meeting, and and if not, you will have another chance to ask your question. I'm just going to then check to see if we have any questions at the moment.
Chairperson, at this time, there are no questions in the Q and A or in the board office or board meeting email address. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Then we will, we will move, keep moving. So next up is item four, which is a port from our executive team, Superintendent Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Just get my document a little bit larger here. So several items we'd like to share with the board of stakeholders this evening. But I comment briefly on student attendance. We have continued to track student attendance, attendance and absence rates across the districts since school restarted in January. Absences due to illness and total absences peaked in mid-January, and they've been declining steadily ever since, and which is certainly the news that we were hoping for. We're very pleased to see that our current student absentee rates are at or even slightly below what we would normally experience at this time of year prior to the pandemic. So again, good news, we're hopeful that this downward trend will continue into the spring. And of course, we'll continue to monitor absences closely, particularly as restrictions are gradually removed by the provincial health officer. To comment briefly on grad events, we are actively working with our secondary schools to plan for valedictory events scheduled for May and June. We are waiting at this point for further guidance from public health officials, as well as the Ministry of Education regarding issues such as vaccine passports. At this time, our plan is definitely though to move ahead with an in-person valedictory ceremony for each school. Our hope would be that by mid-May, we'll be able to plan for the type of ceremony that our schools hosted prior to the pandemic with the ability to include all students at the same time and hopefully to be able to include family members in person as well. That's certainly our goal and what we're working with the ministry staff on trying to achieve. Obviously, we'll continue to work closely with the ministry staff, and we'll be providing updates to parents following spring break and then throughout the spring. So again, we're all keeping our fingers crossed that we can get to where we want to be with that. I wanted to comment briefly on the district conference and just say a few words about the the conference which took place this last Friday. I think anyone who's ever been part of organizing a large event will be able to tell you that it takes just an enormous amount of work, and and this year's conference was certainly no exception. I wanted to say that I thought the program was just excellent. It really reflected many areas of focus from the Board's Strategic Plan, and in particular, the focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. A very large number of staff members come from different employee groups across the district, presented sessions for their colleagues. And I certainly heard nothing but positive comments about those experiences that were provided, so I wanted to say thank you to our employees who did take the time to present. I also thought the keynote speakers were both excellent. At the same time, they were heartbreaking and inspiring, I think, to listen to for anybody who had that opportunity. And the conference really is a joint effort amongst our employee partner groups and the district. And I wanted to thank everyone from the organizing committee who really worked so hard to provide such an amazing set of experiences for staff across the district. I thought it was a really remarkable event, so thank you. I'm going to ask our Secretary of Treasure just to elaborate a little bit on the budget process and timeline for folks who may not be familiar with how we do things here in Richmond.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. So yes, I'm happy to provide some information on the budget process. The board approved the 2223 budget process and timeline in the December 15th public board meeting. So the district has since started its budget process. Similar to previous years, the goal is to complete the annual budget for board approval by the end of May so that we can align with the budget with the operating process and also the government reporting requirements. So the budget information will be updated and shared with the public on the district's budget webpage whenever information becomes available. The budget process provides the opportunity for stakeholders and public to actively engage in the in the budget development process from February to April. There are several ways that the community members can engage in the process. First is the public and stakeholders, they can provide feedback and input by email to sd38budgetfeedback@sd38.bc.ca or writing directly to the Secretary of Treasure to myself. Secondly, the Budget Advisory Working Group is an important forum for stakeholders and for their participation by providing feedback and input. We have scheduled a total of four BAWG meetings. One has been completed in January and three are coming. They are on February 24th, March 31st, and April 14th. Stakeholders, you can certainly request to present budget briefs in the upcoming public board meeting. For the April 27th public board meeting, there will be a committee of the whole component where the stakeholders and public members can participate directly in the budget discussions with the board. So yeah, so that's a brief summary of the budget timeline and the engagement process. And back to you, Superintendent Robinson.
Great, thanks very much, Secretary of Treasure, one. So this time, I'd like to share some of the things as we always do that are going on in classrooms across the district. Just wait for us to get presentation. There we go. Sorry, a quick moment here. There we go. So we're going to start with Pink Shirt Day, which is today. Today's schools across the district have recognized Pink Shirt Day. Students and staff have been working together to share examples of diversity, dignity, and respect. One example from Blair Elementary involves student leaders creating a video to communicate the significance of Pink Shirt Day to the rest of their school. The video begins with a brief history of Pink Shirt Day, and then it gives a candid look at how mean words can hurt while kind words can heal. The video culminates with brief interviews where students openly share their feelings and how their feelings are affected by these words. The filming of this video was a powerful experience as some of the student leaders shed tears as they shared their story. I want to congratulate the students who produced and participated in this video for their courage.
I am here to talk about the history of Pink Shirt Day. Pink Shirt Day began when Chuck McNeil decided to wear a pink shirt to school. This was considered silly, so they decided to bully and make fun of him. Chuck McNeil felt disappointed and hurt. The boys who had bullied him were cruel, but two other boys from the school decided to step in and stand up for Chuck. 12th graders Travis Price and David Shepherd decided to distribute 50 pink shirts to the other students of the school. By the next day, there were so many people wearing pink that nobody could say that it was uncool. These actions from these boys had lifted the spirits of Chuck and had spread awareness to everyone around the world that being yourself and wearing what you choose is all right. Pink Shirt Day now happens every year, and it honors the actions of these two brave boys. Bullying is not okay, and these two boys had helped express it to the world. This is what Pink Shirt Day is really about.
How did it feel when you were called stupid?
I started having a lot of self doubt, and it's, I started asking myself, was I really stupid? Was I not smart enough for others?
How did it feel when you were called intelligent?
It felt a lot better to be called intelligent. It felt like a 50-pound weight weight was lifted off my back.
How did it feel when someone calls you idiotic?
It kind of hurts, like I know it's just supposed to be a joke, but like it still does hurt, like sometimes jokes, like they hurt a lot even when they're not supposed to. Just like this, when I was thinking like I was smart enough and like somebody has to like ruin my self-confidence.
How did it feel when you were called creative?
I think it's pretty nice because like finally somebody really acknowledges my creativity instead of just being like annoyed about how I'm always so random and like it's not really normal.
Feel when you're called annoying?
My self-esteem went down and I kind of felt self-conscious about my own personality.
How did it feel when you were called positive?
It was nice to know that people noticed that and that I made me feel happy.
Feel when you were called fat lady?
I felt really insecure, self-conscious, and I'm really scared because we're just in this tiny school environment. So like if I went into the real world, what would people think of me as?
How does it feel when you're called kind?
It felt really happy and really like joyful that someone would think of me as this and call me kind as like a person.
This is what Pink Shirt Day is really about. Be kind to everyone regardless of what they're wearing or doing because you never know what they're going through. Thank you for watching this video.
So just a great example of a number of the amazing discussions that I know were happening in schools across Richmond today, and I want to thank the students in particular who produced and created that video, as well as the staff and the principal, who I believe is on the call with us right now from Blair. So well done. That's really nice to see that. Talk about clay landforms at Thompson Elementary. Students recently started an inquiry on landforms. After learning about local landforms of interest, students planned their project on paper, and then they were given full creative autonomy in making their clay models. The activity encouraged students to use their creative and critical thinking core competencies. Students were very enthusiastic about this project and were proud of making their ideas work within the constraints of given forms, problems, and materials. It looks like a lot of fun. Students at Cook Elementary have been focusing on reading books written by indigenous authors to help deepen their understanding of First Nations. They recently read My Heart Fills With Happiness by Monique Grace Smith, and then took time to acknowledge the many joys that we all have in our lives. Students were also asked to share what fills them with happiness and represents their thinking. They represented their thinking with loose parts, Play-Doh, fine liners, and paint. These views showcase how our young learners think about the moments in life that bring them joy. On Valentine's Day, students and staff across the district decorated their schools using different media and art forms to express various emotions that their hearts can feel. Students recognize the importance of spreading love and kindness in different ways in their community while reminding everyone to continue to be kind and inclusive each day. Now, that's a great bridge to what we're doing today. Students at Bridge Elementary worked closely recently with one another to develop beautiful class murals. Each student was responsible for creating a small portion of the mural and utilized various problem-solving and math skills in the process. This project provided the students with an excellent opportunity to learn about the value of teamwork and collaboration. What a beautiful outcome there. Students at Mitchell Elementary recently decided to make time for a creative bookmark project. Following the guidance of their teacher, the children used their imagination and they applied their learning to create their very own origami bookmarks. This activity allowed students to hone their creative problem-solving skills while also honing their fine motor skills. At Deef and Baker, students recently explored the wonders of fishing in an Musqueam Inquiry project. After reading books to learn about traditional coastsalish fishing techniques, the students made comparisons to how fishing is done today. This learning activity empowered students to engage in a collaborative inquiry while helping them to make connections between historical and contemporary events. Student artwork at McKinney Elementary, the hallway bulletin board at McKinney was recently filled with wonderful artwork created by students. These artworks were inspired by the group of seven artists, a collection of historical Canadian landscape painters. Students participated in Students participated in video lessons to learn about each artist in the group, their style of paintings and their technique. And each morning they practiced sketching for fifty minutes based on the artists that they had learned about. After completing a couple of sketches, students were then asked to choose one to finalize and present to their classmates. And those are just beautiful. I'm in awe of anyone who could create that. Speed reading activity at McRoberts. Recently, students at McRoberts engaged in a speed reading activity at the school's library. Four to five students were placed at a table with a stack of random books. And each student was required to choose a book and then spend one minute reading and learning as much as they could about the book. They then spent the next thirty seconds sharing the book with their table group. Once every student at the table had an opportunity to share a book, then they moved on to the next table. Then they created a new cycle of reading and sharing. And this activity was intended to help students find new and interesting books to read. Students were engaged and they further grew their love for reading. A student, a group of students at Gilmore Elementary recently explored pop art inspired by the graffiti artist F T Z. After learning about the artist, students came up with the idea to write their own name in the style of graffiti. Students also decorated empty aerosol cans to accompany their artwork. And the class was very proud of putting their work together and creating a visual hallway to display to share with our whole scheme, whole school community. It's just looks amazing. I need to go and visit these schools. And finally, Rube Goldberg Machines at Colton Elementary. Students recently explored the, the ways of building their own Rube Goldberg machines. After researching simple machines and mechanisms, students used materials from home and worked hard to collaborate to plan, build, test and alter the Rube Goldberg machines. Students enjoyed this team building project for potential creativity. And it also provided great opportunities for students to identify different types of simple machines and to think critically about the use of mechanisms in everyday life. So I have to say Chairperson, then I cannot wait to be able to get back into school so I can go and see these amazing displays and activities in person. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you Superintendent. I think it's safe to say that all trustees are also waiting eagerly to be able to reconnect and see the amazing learning, but you're bringing us these presentations monthly. I know, I know my bucket is filled yet again by seeing all of the creativity and learning of our students and, and in particular hearing, hearing the thoughtful and moving reflections by the students at Blair. Obviously hot off the press for Pink Shirt Day today. So, and I know that that's, that's happening around our schools. So thank you very much. And, and another comment just on behalf of the board, a thank you to the organizers, the presenters of the, of the district conference. I know a number of trustees were able to, to participate and hear at least one of the speakers, keynote speakers and it's, it's wonderful to see that we're through our pro D, keeping the equity lens front and center their work as a district. I think thanks again to everyone who participated in making that happen. Trustee Lee, do you have a question or comment?
Thank you Chairperson Sandra. I may ask our Superintendent, would this be a, an appropriate time for me to ask this question? I've been asked by a family who recently received a letter from the Superintendent's office. And in, in their case, their kid has not been attending our school. And the family has been asked to by the end of February to make a choice of sending their kid back to school or to sign their kids up into another educational program such as distributed learning or homeschooling. So they are wondering, do they have a, an opportunity? Would they be able to, if they decide not to send their kids back to school by the end of February? Between March and July, the end of the school year, if they change their mind and want to send their kids back to the school that their kid has been attending previously, what would be the obstacles of any?
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Lee. Chairperson, if I could just provide a brief response. First of all, what I recommend you ask the parent to do is to contact the school directly to speak with the principal about what options would be available to them. I'm hesitant to give much of a detailed answer because it really depends on which school they're attending on what the options would look like for them between March and June. A number of our schools have lots of room and it's likely that if they did want to return to school, if they pulled out and registered and distributed learning and then they wanted to return, it's likely they could get back in. But for some of our schools in the city center area, for example, we have wait lists and it would make it much more challenging for them to go back. So ultimately I would just ask that you ask the parents to contact the school principal and we were always happy to work with the parents on this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. I will then tell the family to contact the principal of the school that their kid is attached to, to this point. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Once again, thanks for, to our executive team for their report tonight. We're going to move to item five in our agenda. And approval of minutes, there are minutes from our public meeting of the board held Wednesday, January twenty sixth in the agenda package. And I'm looking for a mover for adoption of those. Trustee Larson, thank you. Seconded, Trustee Lee, any discussion? Those in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Also included in the agenda package is a record of an in camera meeting of the board also held Wednesday, January twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two. Moving to business arising, our first item six A is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two amended annual budget by law. There is a report from Secretary Treasurer Wang attached and I'm going to ask Ms. Wang to speak to the report before we move to readings of the budget by law.
I thank you Chairperson. Yes, the amended annual budget is on page twenty three to twenty, to page twenty three to thirty nine of the board meeting package. The bylaw per se is on page twenty five of the public meeting package. So the annual budget is prepared according to the accounting standards and the government's financial reporting policies. The highlight of this year's amended budget is the district has higher revenues as well as expenses. And those increases are to reflect a higher than expected student population growth. In the amended budget, the, the district was able to maintain their service levels in the classrooms by adding teaching and supporting positions and make, also make additional provisions for substitute costs and P P E costs as well as the enhanced cleaning programs in our schools. Overall, the total amended annual budget is approximately two hundred ninety one million dollars. And this is a, a brief summary of the report that I'm providing in the, in the public meeting package. So I have the recommendations in the report that the board approved the amended annual budget by way of three readings and also authorized the Chair Superintendent and Secretary Treasurer to sign the bu, the, the budget by law and submit it to the ministry by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Uh, thank you Chairperson and back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wang. So I thank you for the recommendations and for the report. What I'm going to do is read the amended annual budget by law through for trustees. And then I'm going to ask whether there is consensus by trustees that we do the three readings of the budget by law at this meeting tonight. And I'm just double checking the page that that bylaw is on, just so trustees have it in front of them.
Page twenty four.
Thank you very much, Trustee Goldstein. I think I, oh, there we are. A bylaw of the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty Eight Richmond called the board to adopt the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two pursuant to section one one three of the School Act, R S B C nineteen ninety six. C four twelve as amended from time to time called the act. Number one, the board has complied with provisions of the act respecting the amended annual budget adopted by this bylaw. Number two, this bylaw may be cited as School District Number Thirty Eight Richmond amended annual budget by law for fiscal year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. Number three, the attached statement to showing the estimated revenue and expense for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two fiscal year and the total budget by law amount of two hundred and ninety million, five hundred and eighty six thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two fiscal year was prepared in accordance with the act. And number four, the statement, statement two and four and schedules one to four are adopted as the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. So I'm going to ask trustees now, do I have consensus that three readings of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two annual budget by law take place at this meeting tonight? If you agree, just please nod, raise your hand. Just looking for consensus. I'm not seeing anyone in opposition. So we are going to go ahead with the three readings. I'm not going to reread that each time. I'm going to read it and I'm going to read abbreviated version and then ask for a mover and a second. So first reading that the Board of Education Richmond approved the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law by way of three readings. And that the board authorizes the Chair of the Board, Superintendent and Secretary Treasurer to sign the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law and submit the amended annual budget by law together with the amended annual budget to the Ministry of Education by February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two. I have a mover. Uh, Trustee Larson, thank you. Seconded, Trustee Tablotny. Call the question, those in favor? Thank you. That's Carrie. Second reading. That the Board of Education Richmond approved the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law by way of three readings and that the board authorizes the Chair of the board, the Superintendent and Secretary Treasurer to sign the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law and submit the annual budget by law together with the amended annual budget to the Ministry of Education by February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty two. A mover. Trustee Sergeant, seconded, Trustee Hamaguchi. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That's carried. The third and final reading. Now, the Board of Education Richmond approved the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law by way of three readings. And that the board authorizes the Chair of the Board, Superintendent and Secretary Treasurer to sign the two thousand and twenty one, two thousand twenty two amended annual budget by law and submit the amended annual budget by law together with the amended annual budget to the Ministry of Education by February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty two. Can I get a mover for this third reading? Trustee Lee, thank you. And a second. Trustee Tabotny, thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? Those opposed, that is carried. Thank you very much. We have an amended budget. And thank you to Secretary Treasurer Wang for all your work in preparing and your team as well for, for preparing all of the documents for us. Next on our agenda, item six B is a report on classroom ventilation. And just checking here, it is for trustees reference begins on page forty. We have a report from Mr. Frank Guyer, our Executive Director of Facility Services. Mr. Guyer, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I believe everybody has the report before them, which is the proposed classroom ventilation program. This report and this proposal is in alignment with our strategic plans, strategic priority number three. Optimize facilities and technology and goal number two, the district's facilities are well maintained, equitable, safe and conducive to learning. So what, one of the things that's, that came up during the pandemic is that the question around ventilation in schools and one of the things that came to light in, in Richmond was that many of our older schools didn't have mechanical ventilation in classrooms, libraries, multipurpose rooms, staff rooms or offices. And, and the idea of mechanical ventilation is kind of like having a furnace in your house. It brings in fresh air, it heats it, it exchanges it. And, and you get, and, and so you get, you get fresh air coming in to mix with, with the air that's in the room and there's exhaust involved. And what had happened is many of our schools that were built prior to nineteen ninety when the National Building Code mandated it, the only means of ventilation, because it's, it was cheapest cost first back then was passive, which means you open windows and let the air come in and let the air go out and then have radiators built right beneath the windows to heat the air. So you're tempering the colder air for occupant comfort. This is not an energy efficient way to go. And that's one of the things we've learned. When you, when you look at our, at our amended budget, you look at our budget from last year. Our utility budget just went through the roof doing that. So this is not a sustainable way to go. We had been, we'd been looking for many, many, many months at how can we improve air quality in those classrooms? And there was very little, very little choices out there that actually could work with our schools because they are just by their nature, very lately electrified, usually one outlet per classroom for schools that were built in the forties, fifties and sixties. And so our schools didn't have capacity to get these big purifiers. But then we finally found a, a naked model that actually did work for us that had a light load. It just came on the market and within a few days, we got word from the province that they were going to fund this. So we jumped on it, facilities expedited in order, we got everything put in. And right now, for all intents and purposes, those rooms are dealt with. However, air pur, portable air purifiers, they, they're temporary is the best way to put it. They do have a limited lifespan. You know, they are considered an appliance, so they're not going to last twenty years. They'll be, you'll be lucky if we get five years out of them depending on how often they operate. They are more expensive to operate when it comes to filter changes. A filter for one of these units could range anywhere from fifty to eighty dollars whereas a filter for, for a room ventilator, a permanent room ventilator could be thirty dollars. And, and the one thing that these units that a lot of people, you know, everyone was talking about wanting to get purifiers, they don't bring fresh air in. What they do is take the air that's in the room and they push it through a HEPA filter and through a UV light and then put it back out, but there's no fresh air coming in. So, and, and one of the other things that's not in my report that just happened last week, we had one school that was, that needed to get their purifier, they said they need to get replaced because it's making all sorts of noise. Well, that's because kids were putting sand in the intake and it was grinding away and making all sorts of noise. So it's just, it's just not a, a permanent fix and it's, it's a distraction in the classroom. So what we've been doing ever since we found out about the, the deficiencies in these older schools, we, we were, we've been undertaking in-house analysis of different technologies we can use that are economical, energy efficient and somewhat readily available. Because right now, one of the biggest problems we have with supply chain is trying to get any mechanical equipment within six, six months, let alone, you know, eight to ten weeks. So we've been looking for a long time on this and, and the price tag is steep. If you go to higher end technologies, but we did land on one tech, on two different technologies that we're pretty excited about that we think we can actually get these rooms upgraded within about a year and a half to two year period. And the price tag is a lot less because right now, if you're looking at outfitting an entire school, you're, you're looking at probably about one and a half to one point eight million dollars per school. With what we're proposing is a little over a million dollars per school. And we can, and we believe we can get it done in a short period of time. We did, so. We did, so the estimate, which is in appendix B, is a maximum of twelve million dollars. We would do everything in our power to beat that number and I have full confidence we would. But we have to bear in mind that because they're older schools, there's other pieces that may have to get upgraded to accommodate this technology. Boilers, we may have to add another boiler or we may have to replace antiquated boilers. Hazmat, we, we started opening up walls, we don't know, we could have asbestos in there. So we've built all these contingencies in there just to make sure and also electrical upgrades where necessary. So, so I know people have been asking, well, where, where are you going to come up with twelve million dollars? Isn't this something that the province should be paying for? Yeah, they should be, but the thing is, right now, there is no program that would be able to fund this, this type of work. We'd be looking at with, with existing programs and funding sources available to us through the province. It would take us ten years to, to upgrade all these buildings and that's, that's just, that just takes too long. And and I mean, right now, we, you know, we have the announcement, the budget announcement recently and lots of money being shelled out for different infrastructure. We can't guarantee that, that we can just sit on our hands and hope that money is going to come to us when it comes to this. So we believe that this is something that from a facility standpoint. We don't feel it's, it's a huge risk for the school district to, to pay for this. The goal is to minimize that cost and what we're intending to do is to keep lobbying government. And look for grants that we could get like Natural Resources Canada, BC Hydro Grants, Fortis. To see how much of this money we can defray and at the same time. If government does come up with a program, be sure that everything is well documented, that we can get reimbursed. For the cost that we would put out if this program were approved by the board. I mentioned earlier that to complete these schools would take about sixteen to seventeen months. It would take two summers because even though we would be having to do some of this work while school is in session. We would try to pile as much into the breaks as possible and having two full summers would help us an awful lot. So the timeline that I've gotten my report, we're at stage three right now, which is. This report, which is for information only to update the board on stakeholder discussions and to seek for guidance. We had a, we first brought this to the Public Facilities and Building Committee. In, on February second and shared the information with our stakeholders. And got preliminary input and we've heard from the Richmond Teachers Association, their feelings for this. We held a trustee workshop on the seventeenth to delve into the matter a little bit more, have, have some really good open discussions. And and look at how, how this would interact with other, with other projects. And we're, and as I say, we're here tonight. So. The bottom line is that. We've heard from, from our stakeholders, both within the district and we've heard from the province. That ventilation is, is a critical, a critical component to our, to our buildings. Not just from a safety matter, but also we've heard studies with regards to good ventilation. Making it a better environment for, for learning and teaching. And and there's a strong desire from stakeholders to deal, for us to deal with this. On an urgent basis. And, and so what we're, what we're proposing is, is that. To get the ventilation in our schools, to get it, to get this pro, this project going and done. We would need, we would need about three months to be able to procure equipment. Necessary to start the work this summer. And so our goal. Is to, is to bring, is to bring this forward at the March thirtieth, Public Board Meeting. For a final decision, there's no decision requested to, or being asked for tonight. This is strictly for information and our target date for completing this project, should it be approved. Would be August thirty first, two thousand twenty three. As I said, the, the list of schools is attached in appendix A, there's a number of, there's eleven facilities. That currently have no funding attached in any way, not being part of another project. The William Cook Project had completed a year and a half ago, the, there's no funding left in that, but the other prod, the other schools that you see on the list, Thompson, McKinney. Whiteside, Mitchell, Ferris and Bridge. We're, we're intending to address these with money that's either been already set aside. Through, either through the, the capital project. If there's any loose change there, or if we've had other means that we could synergize the work with, with the seismic work to minimize costs. And then appendix B is a detailed breakdown of the, of the estimated cost of the maximum estimated cost of the work. And as I said, we have a hundred and seventy seven units that we would, a hundred and seventy seven rooms that would require. Ventilation in the district, which is pretty substantial and the average cost would be about forty thousand dollars apiece. And ma'am Chair, that's my report and open to any questions.
Great, thank you very much for that report. We know that, well, the pandemic has absolutely highlighted for us. The importance of ventilation in our schools. I see a couple of hands from trustees, so I'm going to go over to trustee Larson.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your report. Three things really stand out for me and I appreciate the information because it's helped me understand that much more. We, we've known from the beginning, especially with the pandemic, how this, the ventilation affects the health and safety. What, what's really made a difference in my thinking and or understanding is how ventilation in, for, how it. We need to have clean air for learning and teaching. And, and then again, our carbon footprint, that this is, this, what we have right now is making a difference. So. Thank you for the, the in-depth information you've provided us with.
Great, thank you, trustee sergeant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guyer, for the detailed report and for trying to help us move along and making our schools better. You know, since the workshop, I've been thinking a lot, a lot about this and I'm really struggling with it. And I've been coming up with a couple of maybe. Not other ideas, but thoughts that might help me in my decision-making at the end of March. And I guess for me, what I'm struggling with is definitely there is a need. And I think this board has known that for a really long time. And provincially, I sit on the Capital Working Group and we, we've been talking about that with lots of districts around life cycle. And the ministry owns the buildings and therefore they must maintain the buildings and they must fund what happens in the buildings and. They give us AFG, which we all know hasn't been enough to keep our buildings up to standards. And so the need is there for sure. Who pays for it is another question that I'm really struggling with and using our reserve. Which, you know, we, we, everybody knows the history, but we sold Steveson Secondary, the land. And we were really told to buy the ministry that we needed to get rid of some excess lands. So we went through that process and we sold it. And that's what's been in our reserve and we were also told at the time that our city center site. Which is still very much needed, our school and city center. That we would have to bring to the table fifty percent of the cost of that. And so we thought this was a win-win, we're going to sell. And the land and get the money and we can bring it to help fund a new school. Since then, everybody knows city center, we still don't have a parcel of land, but it is a priority for the board and it's on our capital plan. And there are talks happening at staff level with where we can find a parcel of land. The need is there. I've been a strong proponent that that school has to happen, it just has to happen for the future. Right now, we may not see it, but we know that in just a few number of years. There's going to be kids there that need to be going to a school and they should be given the same opportunity that our other kids have. And then the other part of our reserve has been for our seismic projects. And so I'm really struggling with that because for this board, we, we made sure. That we advocated really hard about making sure that our seismic program really happened and we got a project office. And that project office, we didn't see any sites. I, I think the board of the day met, I don't know how many times with the ministry, with our stakeholders to say. Our schools need to be safe, they need to be seismically safe for our kids, our staff and our parents. You must do something. We were lucky, we got a project office. And that project office, and really with the government change, we saw eight projects. And we still have twenty four, I believe Frank, still to go. And that, and the project office is a top priority for our district. We need to have the seismic projects in order to keep our project office. And it is, it is a responsibility or the rules right now that districts have to bring some money to the table. And so my worry is if we take our reserve. And we use it for ventilation. You know, what's going to happen to those other priorities that we as a board committed to doing? I'm really worried about that. I don't believe we'll, we'll see reserves like that again. And so this is kind of a one. Time thing and I think we have to be really careful with what we do. And I believe seismic is as important as ventilation. And so am I choosing one over the other? And so I'm wondering because I still do believe that the ministry should be having a ventilation program. And there is a motion coming from Vancouver to BCS TA and it's around. They have ventilation programs, but the standards are not up to snuff. And their communities are upset with them. So even though some of our schools have ventilation, what are the standards that that ventilation is up to? And perhaps it's not good enough. And that's why people are saying across the province, what is, what is the ministry going to be doing as far as putting money to that? Now, in the budget yesterday, there was some. Mention of it because it's a hot topic and I would like to know, you know, what money is coming to the table? What else can we as a board do now to, to advocate to make sure that. You know, we just don't step up with the twelve million, that we advocate that we're at the table. We're with VSB and others in the province to say we need the money. I'm not confident that if we put up the money, we'll be grandfathered later on. Okay, Richmond here, take some money back. So. It, it clearly is a need, one hundred percent, it's a need. It's what will we, what will we not do that we committed to, to, to our public? In, in the meantime, and you know, is there going to be an announcement and should we be putting all our guns? Excuse me, wrong word, all our, all our emphasis on advocating right now. For the ministry to put up with some money. And, and develop standards. I'm not sure how our other schools are doing. So I'm wondering if there was any thought, and I haven't said this to you before, Mr. Guyer, but if, if there was a phased in. Or a phased approach. I think that would be difficult, but and you don't, I don't need an answer now, but. You know, is there a way that we can put a little bit of money into something? We have the purifiers, I know they're Band-Aids, but it was a big chunk of cash. And then we could see what these other things are going to bring. And still hold the commitment to the seismic projects. Because we need those seismic projects to keep the office, we, we really do. So I'm sorry I'm taking so long. But I really, these two weeks, I would really like to hear from our public. You know, what, what their thoughts are. That's what I'm struggling with, but I really appreciate the report. And if I could just, I can send an email to you as well, Mr. Guyer, about the couple of thoughts that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee sergeant. Trustee Hamaguchi.
Thank you. Yep. A great report, Mr. Guyer. Question. Now, one issue that trustee sergeant has raised is available in terms of the money that we had for. From this land of the Skystone sales was, was targeted for. You know, future purchase of, of another school, city center school. Now, since the sale of the Skystone lands. We have been using some of the money and I'm assuming that has helped us with our seismic projects getting, you know. The fact that we're willing to chip in a bit and. Get sort of more for our money in regards to the seismic funding. I guess what I'm wondering is. In terms of the buying power. Of, of the remaining funds. Me, from what I've heard, there's nothing on the radar for the next five, ten years that. That Lansdowne property will be available or, or we're going to obtain one. Probably close, I shouldn't say five to ten years, probably at least five years, it sounds like. When that day comes. With the money that we have, will we be able to. Supply our fifty percent of the, of the share of the land? I am, oh, I'm asking you to project ahead what sale, what the, the value of the land is going to be, but. You know what we're getting at?
I, I think the, through the chair, probably the best way to answer that is that with our current balance in the local capital and unfortunately, I don't have it at my fingertips. Perhaps Secretary Treasurer Wang can help there. It, between that and the money that we've got in our school site acquisition charges. That we call, that, that the city collects from developers for every major development. Right now, we would probably, the maximum, if we were to freeze everything that we've been spending. We'd probably be able to only come up with maybe at best a third. Of the, of a purchase of a site, if we could even find one that's large enough. And if we're looking down the road, right now, our projections were that we would be needing a school at Lansdowne. Around twenty thirty two. It. Who, who knows what the value of the property is going to be? The, the one thing I did want to clarify though, is that. The ministry has not made it a policy that, that we have to, that we do have to cost share. What they, what they expect is that if we're talking about new space and that's primarily what, what we've been doing, I mean, where we've been. Augmenting our seismic upgrades with our own funding is to actually make a better project. It, it had no bearing on whether or not the project was going to be supported or approved and a, and a good example of that is our, is Whiteside Elementary. When we brought, when we got that project supported, it was meant to be purely a seismic upgrade. We brought to the table additional money to make that school even better. Because. Even after we finished the seismic upgrade, there were still going to be significant deficiencies. The other monies that we've used the, towards seismic projects have been more to do with, with additional space. Like when we did Tomsett Element, Tomsett. That one, the money that the board put forward was for, for classroom addition. We put money towards William Cook Elementary. Towards the addition of that school and we put money towards Anderson Elementary, which wasn't even a seismic upgrade, but it was. To, to create more seats. So. I guess to answer your question is, first off, the, the ministry. Where they look for contributions. For capital projects is if we, if they know we have money to contribute, that's the first thing and they, they know where our balances are at. I, my experience in almost twenty years working with the Ministry of Education. Is that we're not required to provide any. Advance notice of, of capital contribution when we put our capital plan together. We basically put forward the project, we say the year, we justify it and, and the cost of the project. The ministry supports these projects predicated on need, not afforded, not, not how much we could put, at least that's been my experience. So. As I said, when the time comes that we do have to purchase property right now to get a property the size. That we'd be looking at is going to be some, if we even find, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy five to a hundred million dollars. And we may only have. You know, twenty eight, twenty nine, if, if that million available.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess, sorry, just to follow up comment is. I have to imagine that not all the districts in the province were fortunate enough and. And to have the purchase of the land such that they had, you know, several million dollars in their building account. And I, I imagine some districts have very little. And I, I imagine some districts have very little. And I, I find it hard to believe that the government would say, sorry, well, we're not going to build a school in your district because you have no money. And, you know, in your history, working with the school board, the idea that you, the idea that some districts who have no money can still get funded, that exists, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I noticed our superintendent, uh, has his hand up and I'm just going to check to see if there was a, a comment or response before we move to the next questions. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. I, I wonder if it might be helpful for the Secretary Treasurer to, uh, share the language, the ministry language around cost sharing and, and district contribution expectations for new capital projects.
Oh, sure. Thank you, uh, Superintendent Robinson. So, um, there are two pieces of information I, I would like to share with trustees and public. The first one is the, uh, current balance for the local capital fund restrict, restricted for future capital projects is, uh, right now it's sitting at twenty-six point two million dollars. That's the, uh, the most up-to-date information, uh, for that fund. In terms of the ministry's capital plan policy, section one point nine of that policy requires that, uh, major capital projects, they do require boards of education to share in the cost of the project. Uh, so the cost can be a site acquisition or it could be, uh, construction costs. So the amount of cost to share, um, will be assessed by the government on a case-by-case basis. So there's not a, uh, standard language or standard amount of contribution that the government will require from the board. So what they typically do, and the language in the policy is, uh, the board's ability to contribute has no bearing on the prioritization of the projects when the ministry is developing its capital plan. So this is consistent with, uh, what Mr. Guyer just, uh, pointed out. You know, the value of a board's contribution will be negotiated and determined at a time the business case is ready for final approval. So they will approve the project first and then they will look at the board's financial statements and say, okay, you have the ability to contribute. Let's say, for example, ten million dollars. So therefore I'm going to ask you to contribute ten million dollars, for example. So that's typically how the process works according to the capital plan policy. Hopefully that, uh, adds value to the discussion here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that information. That is helpful. We know ministry approaches, to these kinds of things do change over time. And it's, you know, what, uh, what a board, a previous board was told is going to be the deal. And then we, you know, or may, may have realized a, a thought, a need at the time was going to come sooner and, and then, it, it now looks to be, because also our projections, of course, as a district change and as, as population and changes as well. I'm going to go to, um, the next trustee, trustee Blotney.
Yes, hi. Sorry, somebody's talking in the background. The, you know, when we originally sold that station property, yes, we had earmarked it for a city center school. But, you know, I wouldn't say, I don't think we ever really had a firm commitment from ministry. We even were stonewalled on selling it for the longest time. The, the ministry wouldn't allow us to sell that property and it sat there and became more decrepit, even though we said it was surplus to us. And then, and then, um, once we did, we couldn't find a piece of property large enough or that was available. And, you know, over time, what that amount that we had put away could buy has, um, costs, costs of properties have gone up. Costs of construction have gone up. And so, you know, it's certainly not going to do what, what we could have done back then. And then, um, in the meantime, and I'm glad that, our Secretary Treasurer and, uh, Mr. Guyer have explained how, how this works, because for seismic, yes, the government is covering the seismic part, but we've, you know, asked them to do additions and additions of classrooms and things while we're doing the seismic projects, which makes sense. And because we had this money, we had to use it. They're saying, well, no, you guys chip in. So, um, that money actually hasn't helped us. It's, they, they look at it all the time and say, well, you have money, you throw it in. So, you know, really, you know, we, we, and we haven't had any new seismic projects in a couple of years, I think two or three years now. I think, you know, the ministry has been dealing with COVID and, and yes, they, they do need to pay for these things, but, you know, I think ventilation is probably not even on their radar. I know they say it is, but, for, uh, for, for them to get all the districts that need the ventilation, uh, done is going to take a while. And we'll be in the queue, just like we are for seismic. So, we have this money that can be used for, uh, the ventilation. I think it's important to do this. It's something we can do to keep our kids safe. These schools are getting older and older. And, um, the ventilation needs upgrading. And that money is not going to do what we thought it would in the beginning. So the bits that we've been using to upgrade our schools and to do this kind of work, such as ventilation, I think is money well spent. So, you know, I'm, I, as much as, you know, I thought we might need a city center school, we've kind of determined that that need is not as great as we thought it was back then. So, from my understanding with our long-range facilities plan, we can wait a bit. And when we don't have money, the ministry is not going to be able to ask us for it. We're just going to have to demonstrate the need in our business case and they will have to pony up. So in the meantime, let's use this to keep our kids safe and, and it does affect learning. So that's my two cents. And, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Blotney. And just a reminder, uh, trustees will have another opportunity to discuss, actually more than one opportunity as it, uh, goes back to our facilities and building committee for more discussion. And also, uh, again, back, back to the board, uh, in our next meeting. Trustee Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the, it was a very good point raised previously that, um, if we spend the money on mechanical ventilation, that we may not be reimbursed. That's true. We could proceed in a way that makes it more likely than not, but still is no guarantees. But what can be guaranteed is that if we are able to spend the money sooner rather than, sooner rather than later on student and staff health and welfare, for example, with the mechanical ventilation, and the money is being put to good use much sooner, which is positive for the health and welfare of the people in the buildings. In terms of reimbursements, if we take the initiative to mitigate the risks of poor air quality, that is looked on favorably. And I'm thinking in analogy to in, insurance and court cases. If, if a person mitigates their, what they need by putting out their own money, then the court looks favorably on the person being reimbursed. So I'm not saying this is going to a court case, but it's, it's an analogous situation. And I think by acting positively with the funds we have to improve the health and welfare of our students and staff, I would be leaning that way. And we'll see during the process whether the board decides to move in that direction with the, uh, mechanical ventilation. But I don't see it as necessarily just, just losing money. I see it as spending it wisely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee sergeant. You have another comment?
Yeah, I just, um, and we're not deciding tonight, so I look forward to other discussion with our public. But I just, I just wanted to make the point that I, I haven't given up on, um, seismic. Like, they are, just because the ministry hasn't funded it, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be advocating really strongly for it. And, um, there is some money, you know, out there. And I know we're trying to organize a meeting with the minister, but we, we can't lose the project office. I mean, we, we, um, to me, that is the top priority right now, is to make sure that we finish the, the commitment we made to the community around seismic. You know, we had such long discussions and, um, with our community, with, with advocates that came from the community to tell us, we had to make this the number one priority. So I hear what everyone's saying, but I'm not prepared to just say, oh, well, they, you know, they're busy or they don't have the money. That's not right. They, they have to invest in seismic. And for Richmond, um, the seismic office, what we went through to get the project office, I'm not prepared to say that, you know, we're done. And so my, we're, even though there's, they definitely will look upon, um, us more favor, favorably if we bring some money to the table as far as seismic. We've, we've known that. So anyways, I just want to say, we, we as a board, I know we, we all agree. But just because they're not doing something right now, doesn't mean we have to work our darndest to get seismic. We have to. So anyways, you, you know, um, I can see if we don't get a project, a seismic project, that, um, I'm, I'm really worried that they will ask why we have an office. And that office is made up of staff that have taken us so far. Anyways, that's just a point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, trustee Lee. And I, um, I think we're going to wrap up this discussion soon, knowing that we have some other opportunities for discussion. Trustee Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make clear, I've heard every word that's been said so far by my fellow trustees. And it didn't change my mind. I never see it as in favor of this is therefore against the seismic project to come along and happen in a future date. That is not the choice. The choice is by, uh, at least, uh, when the date comes along in the future, if the board of that day decides to, uh, in favor of spending this twelve million dollars estimated at this time, so that our students would be safer with those, uh, schools, the eleven schools plus the six that already provided for by other projects before to happen with the ventilation program as proposed by Mr. Guyer and his staff. It is not a matter of one or the other. It is doing the right thing for ventilation now and doing our best in the future to make happen the seismic project. No matter whether we have two dollars contribute to that project when the time comes or two million dollars. So I set my peace. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, trustee Lee. We will be continuing discussions with stakeholders and, and public, uh, through the rest of the process that the board has outlined. Of course, we are grateful, uh, to the province for the funding we received for, to be able to install the, uh, portable air filters into our classrooms that didn't have mechanical ventilation at this particular time. And, uh, but we've also heard, um, from the report from our, from Mr. Guyer, that it, that they really are a temporary fix. And so really grateful to staff for, uh, doing, um, a lot of work behind the scenes to come up with, uh, this analysis for trustees and, um, for some proposed solutions and timelines. Obviously, there are a lot of things for us to consider. Personally, I'm, I am concerned about the purchasing power of the funds that we, that we still have. Um, and the, 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 um, loss in value, um, year, year over year as we, as we wait. And, uh, you know, Mr. Guyer, you said, uh, something, um, in your report about the ministry policy, uh, of course, school will be, will be funded when we can demonstrate a need and it's not dependent on what, what a district has to contribute. And I'm, I'm conscious that in, in my time so far as a trustee, I've, I've been made aware that, that need is not, uh, right, the approval is based when, when, when we're actually seeing bums and ceases, we have put it at times in the past, not on projections. And so, you know, I think there may be a misperception by some that, uh, not, not on the board, but just in, it just generally that the ministry can, will somehow, um, approve and guarantee funding based on projections. And we have a projections to two thousand and thirty-two, where we actually won't know, uh, whether or not we'll be, you know, we'll be getting something like that until we're closer in and find out that our projections are, um, are actually going to be realized. So that, you know, puts us way out in terms of being able to fund something like that. Just something that I, I'm not sure, uh, is well-known, is well-known in the public. So, uh, we will, uh, I think, take a five-minute break at this point, just to give everybody a chance to stretch, uh, get some water. And so we'll reconvene in five minutes, seeing nods. We're all, we're all okay with taking a quick break. And then we'll move on with the, with the rest of our agenda. So again, thank, thanks so much for your report. Appreciate, appreciate the discussion. Okay, welcome back. We're going to move into the rest of our agenda. We have some new business and that is a report from staff on current student mental health supports. And I am going to turn things over to our Director of Instruction, the Learning Services, Ms. Jane McMillan. I think, oh, I should make sure Ms. McMillan is, is here with us after our break. Hi.
Hi, I am.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Instruction for Student Services and, and Data Analytics, Rob Joe Hall, as well as District Administrator for Student Services, Marie Rockliff, who are going to share some information tonight about how we provide support for students around the areas of mental health.
Okay, thank you very much, Jane, and, uh, joined by Ree Rockliff, District Administrator and Learning Services. And Ree and I are here to provide an update around ongoing student mental health initiatives. So, we do have a short presentation. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next slide, please. So our intentions are to provide an overview of district initiatives in the areas of student mental health, including social, emotional learning, mental health literacy and trauma-informed practice as well as others. We recognize that throughout the district, there are staff in a range of roles that are supporting student mental health and well-being. And we note the importance of collaboration with parents, guardians and caregivers. Furthermore, in Richmond, we have a network of community partners that work with schools. Furthermore, in Richmond, we have a network of community partners that work with school and district staff to support our diverse, our diverse student population. Also, we are mindful that over the past two years with COVID, collectively, we have had to navigate some extraordinary circumstances, particularly when considering the mental health and wellbeing of everyone in our school community, so students, staff, and parents. As a result, our presentation this evening is through a lens that acknowledges our COVID realities. Next slide, please. Our commitment to supporting students around mental health and wellbeing is grounded in the strategic plan, specifically priority one, inspired learners, and priority two, equity and inclusion. Together, we look to provide a wide range of mental and physical health programs and supports for student wellbeing, which is very much key, including liaising outside the district with community partners. Furthermore, we note that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach when it comes to supporting student mental health. It is important to take an intersectional approach, honoring the range of backgrounds and lived realities as well as experiences within our diverse communities, particularly as it pertains to mental health and wellbeing. And at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Marie. Next slide, please.
So to begin, I'd like to kind of start with a bit of a definition of mental health. That really includes our emotional and psychological and social wellbeing. It affects how we think, how we feel, and how we act. And it also helps to determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make healthy choices. Mental health is important at every stage of life, from childhood to adolescence, through, all the way through adulthood. It impacts our daily life, how we manage situations, and how resilient we are when we face stress, which we all know is an inevitable part of life. We know that there's many factors that impact mental health. We know that there are many factors that impact mental health that can be taught. And we know that children and adolescents are at a period of optimal learning. And so we work to support our students in the development of mental health habits and competencies that will lay a strong foundation for the future. The research tells us that mental health-related skills and strategies taught during childhood and adolescence are particularly sticky. And therefore, they positively impact students as they become young adults and even older adults. At forty-five, you may not remember how to balance a chemical equation. But you will more likely remember that a teacher taught you that taking a deep breath and taking a walk in nature can center you when you're stressed. So that's, that concept of sticky, sticky learning is, is important. Within our district, our health, mental health strategy adheres to five principles, and those are what you can see on your screen right now. And I'll speak of each of those in more depth in a moment. Those principles are that interventions are tiered or layered, kind of depending on the needs of various student groups. They're responsive. They're research-based, and they're aligned with provincial initiatives, and all of them require multi-year implementation. There's no quick fixes here. This is a complex work that requires time and deep consideration. Next slide, please. So when we talk about responses or interventions being tiered or layered, we often use the RTI, which is the response to intervention triangle that you can see here. It's a triangle or a pyramid to describe our approach. If we were to arrange all of the students in our district in this format, you can see that the largest number are in the lower part and a very small number are on the top. So generally speaking, the large group at the lower part of the pyramid, that's between eighty and eighty-five percent of our students, they don't require intensive support in order to be able to develop the habits and mindsets that are needed for good mental health, while the small group at the very top of the triangle do. And so we need different interventions, depending on which group we're working with. So all of our students benefit from layer or tier-one interventions. Those are considered universal supports because all of our students participate in them. Some examples of universal supports are social and emotional learning, which you and often, is often kind of referred to as cell, social and emotional learning. Those are school-wide programs such as Friends for Life or EASE, which is everyday anxiety strategies for educators. The mental health literacy that we've been implementing with all of our grade-nine physical and health education classes over the last few years, positive behavior interventions, some of those school-wide rubrics that you see in, in many of our schools. Those are universal, universal strategies that we're using with large groups of students. Another universal intervention that you're likely familiar with is actually kind of interestingly offered through our innovation grants. And that's actually been a growing area through the district. There are many grants given to schools in the area of social and emotional learning. And several of those schools have actually been involved over multiple years. And so they're really building some very, very deep competencies, which is great to see. So the second tier or layer of supports is about ten to fifteen percent of our students. They require more specialized or small group interventions. And those are supports such as school-based team, students being referred to school-based team, school counselors, adolescent mental health support workers, area counselor team, and the mental health consultant who are deployed to support this group as, as needed. The very top of the triangle or the pyramid there, the, the third layer includes about five to ten percent of our students. And here there are, the supports are very targeted and very differentiated. There are things such as alternative education programs, our district-based team gets involved there, the inclusion support team, mental health clinicians, connections to foundry and coming soon, the integrated child and youth teams, which I know that Director Rav Johal will be talking to you more in depth in a few moments. Next slide, please. So we also know that there are several populations of students that are particularly vulnerable when it comes to mental health. And we have particular strategies and responses to forge the best outcomes for these students. For instance, for children and youth in care, these are children who are living in foster care. Each child in care has a school-based mentor who maintains a close relationship with the student and supports, among other things, their social and emotional development. The alternative programs have access to youth workers and mental health clinicians and smaller class sizes to support mental health and learning needs there. The indigenous students in our district have access to a teacher and a worker to support a connection to First Nations culture and teachings. And many of our schools also have volunteer, a volunteer staff member who serves as an in-school advocate, a chormiathan. These connections, we know, are preventive factors for good mental health for students in this group. Students with diverse abilities and disabilities have excellent support from the inclusion support team, resource teachers and EAs who are very well-versed in mental health and social, emotional learning. And finally, students in the LGBTQ two-plus community find support, care, and community promoted by the SOJI policy. The support, care, and community provided by that policy are all protect, protective factors for mental health for this group. So there are very definitely some targeted, there's some targeted work happening for these specific student populations. Next slide, please. As we've developed the mental health strategy in our district, we've relied on several excellent sources of data. Through the Ministry of Education, the student satisfaction surveys help us to understand the experiences of our students. And also the human and early learning partnership at UBC support us with the MDI, the Middle Years Developmental Instrument, the EDI, the Early Developmental Instrument, and the CHECK Childhood Experiences Questionnaire. And all of these provide us with population-level information on many aspects of development, including mental and physical health factors. Another questionnaire we use regularly is the McCreary Health Survey that comes to us every few years from Children's Hospital. That survey really delves in to health and mental health, so physical health and mental health of adolescents. So all of this data really helps us to better understand who our students are and what their needs are. So next slide, please. Great. So as you know, mental health is a very important topic in our larger community. And I know that daily, all of us who work in this area receive multiple inquiries from individuals and companies who are very keen to be part of our journey towards good mental health for our students. And because of this, we pledged several years ago that any intervention we use in our district will be research-based. Good quality resources that are known to be highly effective are the ones that we choose for our students. For the social, emotional resources, we ensure that they're vetted by CASL, which is the collaborative for academic and social and emotional learning. And their graphic is that lovely circle that's there. All of the resources that we promote with our, with our schools are well-researched with, with CASL. Also, the mental health literacy that we've been working on now for several years has been extensively studied by, at both Dalhousie and UBC. So we know that they're effective. We know that they work. And next slide, please. And the final principle that I'd like to address is the importance of aligning with provincial initiatives and directions and the concept of multi-year implementation. The Erase Strategy is a provincial initiative that I'm sure you're all familiar with. That's one of the reasons we're all wearing our pink shirts today. That's always been part of the Erase Strategy. Recently, we've been implementing the EASE framework, that's Everyday Anxiety Strategies for Educators. And we know that good quality implementation of any initiative requires time and patience. And we know that it'll take multiple years before these strategies are fully implemented. Finally, the last initiative that I will share is a Pathway to Hope, which is a multi-pronged, extremely complex, and very well-researched vision for mental health in our province that includes the Integrated Child and Youth Teams, or ICY, that Director Johal will share more details about in, in just a moment. So I think that's it. That's I, I've, yes, those are, those are my pieces. And over to you, Director Johal.
Thank you, Marie. So mental health literacy, which we refer to as an ongoing initiative established now district over the past few years. And this specific study is a partnership with UBC, the University of Alberta, and mentalhealthliteracy.org. Now, this research is timely with respect to our ongoing awareness of mental health and student wellbeing, as well as student experiences during COVID. Making mental health understandable and recognizable for kids, families, and educators is really at the core of this research, which is now at a stage where we can review the effectiveness of the Mental Health and High School Curriculum Guide utilized by our secondary teachers in physical and health education. The study is taking place in our semester to grade-nine physical and health education classes this school year. And there are macro and micro aspects of this study. So we'll be, all grade-nine students will be, will be participating, and we will be reviewing data from all grade-nine students, but also looking at data from a subset of students who are Mandarin and Cantonese speakers at home, which aligns nicely with our strategic plan in terms of equity inclusion as we look to enhance our support of students from diverse populations. The outcomes from the project will provide solid evidence on the effectiveness of the Mental Health and High School Curriculum Guide and to inform us how to develop effective strategies to accommodate youth's social and emotional, youth's social, emotional, and mental health needs. Next slide, please. So Integrated Child and Youth Teams, also known as ICY, is one initiative within the province's Pathway to Hope strategy for mental health and substance use services in DC. There will be teams in five regions to start, one in each health authority across the province, with Richmond being amongst the first jurisdictions in the province to have ICY teams. We are hopeful of having one of a potential for ICY teams up and running before the end of the school year. Now, ICY is an evolving partnership between the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, the Ministry of Child and Family Development, Vancouver Coastal Health, foundry BC, as well as the Ministry of Education and Richmond School District. Next slide, please. As you can see on the slide, there are four main aims of ICY teams. And it's important to note that traditionally Richmond has been underserved with mental health resources. Some of this can be attributed to stigma. Within our diverse communities, there are some populations that are not comfortable acknowledging or discussing mental health issues and challenges. And as a result, mental health concerns from the community have tended to be underreported. Due to being underreported, we have been underserved with resources. And unfortunately, this has led to significant wait times for children, youth, and families here in Richmond. That being said, there is significant potential with ICY in terms of taking an intersectional approach to mental health and substance use, recognizing the diverse and racialized communities that are in our Richmond communities. Next slide, please. So the way things work before ICY comes into the picture is that young people and their families told their story to different service providers and had to figure out where to go. And as you can note from this visual, child, children, youth, and families are in the middle and have to navigate a myriad of services. If we just go back to that previous slide, please. This model does make it very challenging for children, youth, and families to receive ongoing and appropriate support from service providers. Next slide, please. After ICY teams are in place, there are streamlined and more efficient processes with better coordination of care so that young people get timely access to a full set of services and supports. In this diagram, there is wraparound service with multidisciplinary teams serving children, youth, and their families. The ICY team development is informed by the needs of communities and solutions are co-created with multiple stakeholders in each community. Next slide, please. So with ICY teams, there is a multicultural and culturally safe supports that are available, including through indigenous positions and other positions to support diverse populations. And this will be unique to each community. Some children, youth, and families may feel safer, more welcome, and more likely to ask for help in a community-based setting. So it is intended to be an help-bound service model. The teams make it easier for children and youth to connect to the care that they need and where, where and when they need it, and in the places and spaces that they feel more comfortable. So that could be in school, at home, other community centers, a park, a coffee shop, or in nature. The teams work towards culturally safe distinctions-based as well as approaches that are gender, diversity, and trauma-informed. So that's a quick summary of ICY teams, which again, we're hoping to have at least one of four teams up and running before the end of school year. Last slide is just, will open up to any questions or comments.
Trustee Larson, go ahead. Did a comment?
Thank you very much. Wow, this is, it's heavy. Thank you for the detail. And I, I, one of the things that really stands out to me that you've explained is explained is uh with regards i- in one area is the ICY teams. And what I really heard was child, youth, and families. So it, it would seem to me there's support there for the families in that circle around the child or the youth as well. Is, is that a good understanding of that?
Yes, Justin Larson, yes.
Okay. Because I, I, I think that is just, that's huge. Uh that's their first tight circle around, I would think, and it goes like that. So um that's very impressive. Thank you very much. It's um very rich.
Okay, uh thank you, Trustee Tablati.
Yes, um well, I'm really, you know, happy to see everything that we do, and I'm glad to hear about the ICY teams. Richmond has been underserved for a long time. And uh you know, it has been kind of concerning to me among other people. But um what I'm wondering then, uh all this information and, and all the, you know, services provided, how do we get that information to parents? Because I think sometimes, you know, the first go-to, well, number one for parents quite often is the school. If they're willing to talk. Sometimes, you know, with the stigma, they're not. So how do we get all this information out there um for parents and educate them? I mean, that's part of the mental health literacy is, you know, for parents to understand and, and really, you know, to decrease this stigma, which um which really interferes in, you know, in kids getting treatment for, for things that, that absolutely can be, you know, um diagnosed, and that kids can feel better. But it's such a barrier to learning uh when they have, you know, anxiety and, and, and um different mental health conditions. So how are we um helping parents to connect to resources? I guess it's my question.
Staff wanted, want to answer that, that, that's, yeah.
Th- thank you, uh Trustee Tablati for, for the question. I mean, I think uh when, when we look at uh some of the components of the presentation, um you know, there's, we have to again consider the, the diverse populations that we have. Um so really, I think messaging and finding the right resources um that are available, whether through school websites or accessing councils at the school is very important. Um another key piece is that uh our, our coordinator of uh mental health, Connie Easton, is currently working to establish a, a district advisory of um for mental health with, with students uh being a part of that. And one thing that we have found in Richmond is just the power of student voice and um using students to really relay the message about their experiences and the challenges that um that they're having to navigate um, you know, throughout their schooling. So uh I, I think those are a couple of um, those are a couple of examples that we are going to continue to work with uh sharing the message with uh with our diverse communities. And, and again, uh the, the Mental Health Literacy Study that we're looking at with grade nine students um partnering with Yu Feng Wei, a professor at University of Alberta. Uh you know, we are hopeful to um, you know, following spring break to, to run some sessions with uh parents in, in English and as well as in Mandarin. Um just recognizing that uh, you know, we have to um meet families where they are at, and they're not all at the same place in terms of um you know, whether it's understanding or grasping uh wh- how, how, how we see mental health in, in our current realities.
Yeah, that's really good to hear. And, and I know there has been a willingness on the part of um Pathways, which uh you know, Pathways House and Dave McDonald, they, they've been expressing a desire to get involved um, you know, with the art, in partnership with the school district for uh student mental health um programs. So um I do believe we're working with them, but um you know, that would, they're a definitely a good connection group and have always been willing to, you know, assist with uh our student mental health. So in, in many ways. Um but it's really good to hear that we're getting better at this because, you know, it's been a long time coming, and um our students have suffered for it, especially during COVID. So it's good to hear all of all this, these initiatives. So thank you.
Uh thank you, and I'll go to Trustee Lee. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh if I may, a question to our Director Joe Hall. Uh I read uh the uh the projection video uh slides. And I see the uh categories of child, youth, family, and then nation-centered. Could you help me understand? Uh maybe give me a couple of examples of nation-centered uh relevant to our community of School District thirty-eight.
Thank you, Trustee Lee, for the question. Uh that specific um uh text, nations would refer to students who are of indigenous backgrounds. So if we have students who are indigenous, who belong to um different nations, and they require support through ICY, um it'd be developing the appropriate support for uh for their nation. So that, that's what the nation refers to in um in that, in that slide, indigenous students.
So nation in the indigenous context.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Lee, for your comments and questions. Trustee Hamaguchi.
Uh just wondering regarding um the language barrier and helping people uh how much of the challenge is that? And, and you know, what's sort of built in place to, to deal with the language challenges uh of the different kids and people out there?
Uh thanks, Trustee Hamaguchi. I mean, we do rely on our um summer workers in school, so our Swiss workers, when we do find that there's families uh where there's a language barrier. So um you know, we, we do have a very good relationship with the, with Swiss workers, and, and when uh when necessary, they can really complement uh our, our, our counseling and administrative teams at our schools.
And thank you.
Thank you. Just a, a, a personal comment. I, I think hearing, hearing the report and everything that's happening, all the initiatives happening um in terms of our mental health strategy uh leaves me feeling, leaves me feeling quite hopeful. You know, it, it does seem to be a really dedicated focus, and, and we're being helped out um maybe more than ever before in terms of initiatives provincially um and funding and um and new community-based supports that we can plug into and be part of. Yeah, my concern is, is I, when you were showing us the, the, the different levels of students, right? And, and the kind of need that, that, that we see, a concern is with, with COVID, with the pandemic in particular, that we're going to see higher numbers of students moving into those higher categories. And it's just on my mind that as, as the board plans to um do, you know, another round of engage another round of advocacy with um with provincial and federal um elected officials uh here in Richmond that um, you know, any information that you can provide for us in terms of what additional supports and funding, you know, could be used um uh that the board would be happy to take, you know, some of those ideas and suggestions, or where there might still be some gaps identified for particular groups, or if we are seeing um say more students moving into those higher, higher-level categories. Uh and I'm also assuming with, with these kinds of new initiatives that um that there will be feedback loops um and sort of as, as these teams get going, especially um integrated to the youth teams that there will be, there'll be ways for the district to provide feedback on, on how we feel it's going and um and feedback from students uh so that they can continue to, to improve the program as, as we go. It all looks good, but until it gets, we get to implementation, it's, it's hard to know. Um you know, what, what tweaks will be needed. So uh so thank you for that, and we look forward to, yeah, hearing what, what we can take in terms of advocacy for uh for additional supports from levels of government. Uh Trustee Hamaguchi, did you have another comment, or is your hand just from before? Okay, just checking. So thank you again uh for that report on, on something that I, I believe is on all of our minds as we as we hopefully begin to move out of, out of the pandemic, but need to really focus on the effects of that for our students. Okay, moving along in our agenda, um we come to our second uh question period. Uh so we are happy to take questions from, from attendees tonight. I'm not seeing any, but I'm just gonna check with our staff. I'm seeing, no, we don't have any, any questions coming in at the moment. We're gonna move then to our standing committee reports. Um first is Audit Committee. Chair, Trustee Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh our committee meets uh every second month, and our next meeting will be on March seventh.
Thank you very much. Education Committee, uh Chair's, Trustee Larson.
Our next meeting will be Wednesday, April the twentieth at um public six o'clock.
Thank you. Facilities and Building Committee, Trustee Hamaguchi.
Hey, for information, uh the minutes of our meeting held January, January fifth are attached. Um our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March second at four thirty PM. Thank you.
Hey, by that, some legal committee, Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. Uh we actually had our meeting on February sixteenth. And um I'm not sure, I don't have uh close at hand uh our next meeting time, but we just had one as well, so that would be a month from now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee, Chair, Trustee Tablati.
Yes, well, Policy Committee always has work to do, so I'm bringing some more work. We have been working on our uh Policy eight oh four point one and eight oh four point one R, which is regulation, Community Use of District Facilities, and Policy eight oh four point four Fees for Use of District Facilities. And uh so a little background, in August, the provincial government uh amended the School Act and um issued a new prescriptive ministerial order um pertaining to the provision of childcare programs on board property. And in December twenty twenty, a legal opinion was provided by BCSK to Boards of Education regarding the need to revise their policies to reflect these changes, which is what we're doing. And um so based on that information received from BCSK Legal Council and further feedback received to date, our district staff uh collaborated and have um updated the policy to reflect um the requirements contained in the ministerial order. And then uh at the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Policy Committee, the draft revised board policies were presented. Uh at September Policy Committee, the revised draft documents were presented based on feedback received to date. At the twenty-seventh of October, believe it was sent out um into the stakeholder review process, and there was no new feedback received. So uh now we are, there was a notice of motion last meeting, and so therefore, here is a recommendation which I will read and move, and I'm looking for a second there. So that the Board of Education, Richmond, approved Policy eight oh four point one and eight oh four point one R, Community Use of District Facilities, and Policy eight oh four point four fees for use of district facilities.
Thank you for removing that recommendation. Uh Trustee Goldstein, are you seconding? Okay, thank you very much. Um any discussion from trustees? Any final comments from the mover?
No, I just think a lot of work has been done to update this policy, and you know, moving forward, um there's a lot of discussion about childcare in the news and the new mandate, you know, from the ministry, that the ministry has now taken over um childcare, and, and they will be on our board properties. And so therefore, um we must update our policies to reflect that.
Thank you. And then I will call the question. I was in favor of the motion. Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thank you.
And I just wanna thank staff for all the work they've done on, on writing and presenting to us. Thank you.
Indeed. Policy um takes a while to wind its way through, even a straightforward change and requires a lot of uh staff time in terms of tracking and, and and helping the Policy Committee and the Board uh work on, work on fine-tuning as we get feedback. So absolutely.
And our next meeting is Monday, March seventh at eleven AM for public.
Okay, thank you. We have no correspondence uh in the agenda tonight, so um we're gonna move to item eleven, Board Committee and Representative Reports. Uh we had a Council Board Liaison Committee meeting on February the ninth, and I believe Vice Chairperson uh Heather Larson had a couple of points.
Yes, uh we had, there was some really good information shared regarding traffic safety around schools. The city is currently working with ICBC and the RCMP. We also had a very positive conversation with regards to connections, which is live, work, and play in Richmond. And the collaborative, the collaborative effort between the School District thirty-eight and the city um was, was wonderful, very, but very positive. And part of the conversation includes thoughts about the best platform to communicate in order to reach, engage, and um include all the, quite an enjoyable meeting. So I think um, yeah, very, very positive. And the next meeting is Wednesday, April the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you very much. We've gotten to the end of our agenda and a lot of fruitful discussion, so looking for uh move, uh motion to adjourn. Trustee Larson, thank you. Trustee Hamaguchi, seconding. All in favor? No one's opposed to adjourning. Perfect, thank you. Uh thank you to everyone who uh has been with us this evening, uh has been attending, and wish you all a good evening and I hope that you have a good rest of your week. You're over the hump now. Good night, everybody.
So we're going back to the in-camera?
Trustees and staff will be going back to the post-meeting, yes, thanks.
Thank you.